So, I would like to wear a mask, but since I have to run the meeting, I'm gonna be too hard to understand me, I think. So, you're all six feet away, we'll be, we're good.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're going to, um, if you wouldn't mind, we're gonna do the warrants and the minutes, and then we'll do the tax.
Whatever you want to do.
So, I need a motion to sign the warrants.
I'll make a motion, we sign the warrants, September thirtieth, October eighth.
Second.
You got two, three of them there.
And the fifteenth.
You can't wait to be involved, can you?
I know, I, I missed you, guy.
I got them all.
Okay, and you, and Rachel seconded.
Got it.
All right, all in favor? All in favor? I see your head.
Got it.
Excellent. Okay.
Wait, did you, you motioned to sign the warrants.
And then you, then you ended up saying the minutes, it's the warrants.
The warrants, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's do that again. Motion to sign the warrants, who seconded? Rachel, all in favor? Now, Jason, you can do the minutes.
I will make a motion, we approve the minutes, September thirtieth, October eighth, and October fifteenth.
Second? Anybody second?
Come on, Rachel.
I don't think I can second if I'm working there.
Well, I'm in for all of them.
Right.
I have to say, I'll second.
If I wasn't there.
All in favor? I would say I wasn't, I was at most of the law. Okay, so, so the exciting news of no old business, but for new business, we've got Jim here with hopefully some great tax commitment news.
I do. I do. Uh, the mill rate has dropped from twenty-three-ten, finally, to twenty-two point seven-three.
Excellent.
And that, uh, some other good news is the, uh, for those folks who get home state exemptions. The home state exemption went up this year, so folks should see if, uh, probably a net eighty dollar decrease in their taxes, those, you know, from prior years.
Excellent.
Okay, so, that plus the drop in the mill rate will, uh, be a nice, uh, surprise for many people.
That's wonderful.
Okay.
So, uh, you need a mo-
To get the tax bill.
You need a motion to accept the tax commitment?
Uh, yes, you should do that.
All right, so I make a motion that we accept the, uh, is it two thousand twenty tax commitment?
Yes, two thousand twenty, uh, uh, tax commitment.
I second it.
Wait, and the amount of point zero two two seven three zero.
She's all over it.
Yeah.
Oh, you made the motion. Is that a second?
She did, Rachel.
Who's, who ma- oh, I made the motion. All in favor? I usually don't make the motions. You need any, us to sign anything?
Yes, you will have to sign the certificates of assessment in about four or five, five er places. And those are the commitment docs that, uh, have to go to, uh, that's the tax collector.
Would you note that Mr. Wagner is late?
It's not too bad.
Jim just announced the mill rate for the tax.
Went down.
It's down to twenty-two point seven-three. Down from twenty-three point ten.
What was that?
The mill rate, that you're signing the tax commitment.
And what'd you say?
It went down.
It's down.
Yes.
It's down. The warrant, before you get, before you get?
Down.
Twenty-three point one zero.
Down.
Okay. Down, got it.
And, uh, I'm hap- also happy to say that the, uh, the change in the software for the, the Trio Assessment Program, uh, really worked out nice. Uh, for probably the first time in the history of the tax commitments that I've done with Trio, every number matched and added across all the documents.
I'll have to share that with the Trio people.
It was really good.
I'm sure they'd like to compliment.
It worked so good, and it just ran solid, so, very happy about that.
Okay.
That's pretty much it, unless you have some questions?
No, we're all good.
Oh, and again, the home state exemption went up, and so, the average taxpayer should see about a hundred bucks reduction in their tax bill.
Excellent. And it's a good chance to remind people, we're putting this on the tax bills, that you may be eligible for home state exemption.
When I say a hundred bucks, I'm talking about people with home state exemptions.
And if you've just bought a piece of property here, and this is your home state now, then after a year-
And veterans.
You can, uh, come in and apply with you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's it?
Thank you very much, Jim.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you for our good news.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, Barbara, we're up now to Lost Fisherman's Memorial.
Nice hat, Jim.
No man. There used to be a pair of socks, he just stuck it together.
You weren't all socially distanced, so go ahead.
I just wanted to make the board aware that about a year ago, the members of the Lost Fisherman's Memorial, their board, approached the Lubeck Historical Society because they no longer wanted to oversee it. They asked if the Lubeck Historical Society would take it on. And, uh, we've been going around and around for about a year, that it's a only separate entity, but it will come under our auspices. I will file the tax papers and so on and so forth for it. I had, I have copies of the contract that was signed on August eleventh, Ritz Town. John Timber and John Sutherland signed it. And I'm here this evening because one concern that I have is that the historical society, it isn't overseas. Oh, I'm sorry. Overseas, uh, welcome to Lubeck sign, and the piazzos out there, and the flags and so on. And now we're asked to take this over and oversee it, which we took a vote and it passed. The concern was-
It came with money as well, right? They must have some money.
They have some money left.
For maintenance.
Yeah. But, when you look at what they pay out each year, I don't think it's from the last forty years, okay?
But, you can renegotiate those things, I thought it sounded pretty high.
I'm out there renegotiating already, because I think, that's why I'm here. One of the, uh, in things was Article A, it says in dedication and liability, they have to carry, uh, insurance on that property. The property belongs to the town, the town has leased it to them for thirty-five years.
Of which how many are left?
Well, this was taken over in twenty-eleven, was the signing of this.
Okay, so about twenty-six years.
Yes, but there is an out, and I don't want to take it, and I don't think they want to take it. If they default and cannot afford to carry an insurance, it automatically reverts back to the town per your contract. So, what I'm here asking is, will the town consider putting it under their insurance policy so we can take care of it? I can't take it on trying to raise-
I think we had investigated that today, what, what conclusion?
Haven't got one yet.
We haven't, we haven't got a response from MMA.
We had to send pictures, and it's still on their desk.
So, I would say-
I'm just nobody you know, because it's-
That we could pass a motion, if it's agreeable to the floor for that, we would do that, if they're agreeable, provided contingent on the fact that MMA allows us to do that.
I mean, I'm totally for it.
So, I, we just, we would have to put that little caveat in there, that we have to have an approval from our insurance company.
Can I inject something here? In, in this little investigation, we found that the monument lot is not on insurance either. So, would it be okay to also include the war monument?
Would be, would be.
I would-
Oh, I think we should do both of them.
Yes, so, we're, we, so did you include that?
Include that? Okay, so, do we want to make a motion to, uh, allow the tax?
Can I just read something before you make the motion, so it's clear to everybody?
Yes.
Um, please. A tenant shall name landlord as an additional insurer on certificates of insurance. All of tenants' personal property upon the premise shall be a tenant's sole risk, which there isn't anything there at all, um, and shall be the responsible for maintaining adequate insurance with respect to same. Nothing herein shall constitute a waiver of any immunities or defenses available to the landlord under the main tort claims act or an applicable law. In the event, an, an insurance policy for tenants lapses, or tenants fail to properly maintain any insurance policy effective the premise, the tenant shall be in control, and the lease shall automatically terminate, which means it automatically will come back to you.
She's reading the lease.
And this is the law, this is what the town's lawyer drew up.
I have, no, I know, I know.
I'm just saying.
Well, the thing is-
If I don't get some help, it's gonna be yours to take care of.
Anyway, I agree. Well, let's hope that MMA lets us insure it as being, um-
Well, again, Renee can turn around and say, well, you don't want to, that's fine, because we're gonna have it anyhow, because we can't afford the insurance. I can't afford the money.
It's not to me a win-win situation would be to have you take it over, um, oversee it and have us work with the insurance.
That's fine with me.
But then, I'm not quite sure why that clause says the tort law, you know, so, it has to, it has to be able to be insured as if it was like a park.
Replaceable, yeah.
It has to be insured as if it was a town proper.
It basically is, though.
It is, it is a town land, they're just basing it so that it's-
Well-
This is replace, this is a replacement value insurance, if there was something to happen to the structure.
No, it's insurance for everything.
It was about line. Well, I don't think, I think, see, that's the thing, that's what the tort law is with the municipality. If you fall in, on a structure in a park, then, you know, they can't sue the town.
You're on your own.
They're on their own.
I'm sure many of you have been down there, and I get very concerned, and I ask the clerk for-
They do, people climb on it.
Exactly. I have seen children climb on it, and I'm thinking to myself, this is a memorial, don't you have any respect?
There probably needs to be signs, as people might find.
Oh, well, I'm looking into that.
Are you looking to assign that?
I'm looking into signs, I'm looking through a few things.
Yes, that would be great.
I needed to come here about this, because I, we can't take on these things.
So, we'll let you know. So, you want to do that?
No, your, your place is all already.
Uh-uh. So, we want to make a motion that we will, uh, the town would like to insure both the Lost Fisherman's Memorial and the War Memorial if we can, if MMA approves of the record, uh, the-
We already do the sculpture, yeah, that's, that is insured, but it's the only one.
And, either way, either way, we end up with a bad, yes, I'll second that.
You motion?
Yes. All in favor? So, that's, of course, that's contingent on the approval by MMA that we can in fact do that. So, we'll let you know.
Right, and no offense, uh, if they say no, we're gonna go over to the town.
I mean, yeah.
That's the answer, because the insurance is gonna, will lapse, and it does, it's not lapse yet.
What do they pay for insurance?
Uh, the last I heard, it was roughly twelve hundred dollars a year. But, we only make roughly nineteen hundred to two thousand at our yard sale, so I can't take on-
No, of course not, no.
But, thank you for allowing me to come up and talk to you.
Well, I appreciate you coming, take that over, you've done a wonderful job on the cemetery, Barbara, it just looks fantastic.
Oh, it's incredible.
It's so good.
And it's wonderful to see you.
It's so nice.
Thanks for going.
I just, I try not to look when I'm driving by, like, I think you just stop and walk, or walk through it, because-
Could I just make a-
It's eye-catching.
Uh, but, we're gonna start up again in the spring, and we will, I appreciate the ladies at the town, all because we publicize it up here, and Penny puts it on, uh, the television and so on and so forth. Um, we are, at, at our expense, we're trying to bring Joe back again, but Lauren Marson and some men have already made a tripod, and they stood up their first stone last, uh, October the fifteenth, I think, was our last one, so they did that. But, we need him back for the gantry, I think it's called, that lifts up the, um, what do you call them, oles. But, it, it's, a lot of people are noticing, and a lot of people are appreciating what we do, and they're asking us, when are you taking on another cemetery? And I keep telling them, we have to do baby, that's our dedication right now.
I mean, a fundraiser.
If, I just hope people will come back in the spring, we have a dedicated group in this community that come out almost every time, and God bless them. Uh, some of them even cleaned on Mother's Day, uh, which was amazing, and, um, if we keep that up, we'll have probably another hundred done by the end of next year. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but the more people that come out, many hands, making money.
Well, and the select board really thanked you at another meeting for cleaning the war monument as well.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we paid her money, she said, uh, whoop.
That was wonderful.
We bought the solution, and they did have so much-
And we had materials on our property.
Yeah, and they were, they're using the, the thing from the marina to pull the, Lorne, Lorne came and borrowed some, some gizmo that pulled, yeah, that, that you were working.
Oh, the jack thing.
Yes.
Hoist, a bit of a hoist, yeah.
I don't know the technology term of that.
And we're gonna continue it again next year, if anybody would like to come out, it'll be on the television, it'll be in the papers, and I thank Renee and the ladies at the town office for all their helping, add进去 their burden, but thank you.
Well, thank you very much, that's some good news. Waste water treatment plant. Renee, I'm gonna give you that happy topic to talk about.
Well, if you could, if you want, in your packets, there's a letter from Oliver, Bill Oliver. He came down with Emily's, um, to inspect a problem that we have right now at the waste water treatment plant. That is, the Imhoff tanks, the two tanks that are the primary catch for what it catches. There are two tanks, they're called Imhoff tanks, there's two of them. One of them is now offline because of deterioration and damage. Over the years, the metal has corroded, and DEP, during the DEP's inspection, she really pointed it out, and at that time demanded a plan. Basically, time has run out for that portion of the plant. So, we asked for Bill to come down to try to give us some sort of guidance on what we can do right now, while we wait for these other grants to come in. And, they ended up having to drain the water that's in that tank, in order to even view the problem. So, it, that took some time, and Bruce went to work on that, got it drained down far enough to be able to see that the damage is too severe for any Band-Aids at this point. There's no Band-Aiding what's there, and what's the sense, and there's really nothing to fix. It's either go in, fix it to what it needs to be, you don't have another choice really right now. The matter right now of Tine, he did in the letter point out that we've got the four hundred thousand that, grant that came from the DEP. Um, it requires, did it say twenty percent match?
I think it's twenty percent.
Twenty percent match. So, right now, we have bought Tine with the DEP, but they mandate that everything be online. You can't leave it until these other grants come in. It, it does have to come online.
Twenty-five percent.
We're going into winter right now, I don't know how much can be done with fixing that whole tank, just to what it needs to be. A crane has to come in, mobilization for all this work, it's gotta go up to bid.
Oh, it's not gonna be cheap.
It won't be cheap, and he, he's put in a, an estimate of what it could cost.
He's got a three hundred ninety thousand dollar estimate.
Three hundred ninety thousand?
Which he said, three hundred could, could be, the DEP will likely allow three hundred thousand, which the town would have to come up to ninety thousand.
So, in our CD, we have eighty-one thousand five eleven seventy-one, I can't remember the term, so there would be a little bit of a, if we were to pull that out, there would be a little penalty pulling it out early. But, that number consists of the two twenty-five thousands that we raised two different years, so we put it all into the CD to get more interest as we wait. He, in the letter, he explained a method of raising the rates, I, I don't have mine, Dan's got it, but it says, uh, something about-
Three dollars a quarter.
Three dollars a quarter per customer, right, so, four hundred twenty-five sewer count to cover this, um, share, the, we could go get a loan for ninety thousand, and pay the loan from decreasing the sewer rate by three dollars a quarter per-
Well, yeah, or we could use this month.
Or, we could do this month, yeah.
So, that would be going-
I don't want to borrow money.
Yeah, that would go to the town, the special town meeting, correct?
The, the other thing is, we're running on one tank.
That's right.
What kind of shape is the other tank?
Yeah, exactly.
It's thirty years old.
And Bruce mentioned that, too, would it be, would we might as well, while they're here, mobilize to fix the one, get a loan big enough to fix both of them?
The both can be in the same kind of shape, are we done?
Yeah, 'cause they both could equally use as much.
Yeah.
Well, I imagine you have to fix one at a time. And we don't need to make any decisions tonight.
You could have one up and running.
You don't have to decide on anything tonight, this is me bringing it to you, so we can think about it, see what our options are, but this is what we're looking at right now.
Alrighty, well, thank you for that information, it's, uh, a lot you're gonna have to keep up with.
Thinking creatively.
We can't assume that this is being done?
Could, could I speak?
Go ahead, Rachel.
I, I wanna talk.
I imagine so.
Well, thinking creatively, I mean, what brilliant ideas could we come up with to take care of this effluence? I mean, it's sitting there, it's gonna be there, I think we bite the bullet, as it were, and do it.
I wonder if we could get a loan from the bond bank, another low interest, like we can do a fire truck, but you can only apply for less than a year.
As I read it, there's ninety thou, there's, uh, what, three hundred, how's, three hundred thousand of grant funds to be used.
And-
And then, we're looking at is ninety thousand.
I contacted Mandy Oliver, she's the lady on the grant side of Oliver's for us, to find out if there's any other, like a forgivable loan somewhere that we don't ever have to take, so, she is looking into some other options.
Yeah, this is just a known, an info that this has to, this is urgent, that we will have to fix it by the spring, I assume, in the spring, it's gonna have to get fixed.
Absolutely.
And please, no, the other Imhoff tank is fully functional, so it's, there's no problems right now.
And the loan they're talking about is one percent.
Yeah, this is interesting hypothetically, yes, yeah, if we could get one.
I don't think we should dilly-dally, as it's, as I, you know.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Renee, that's, uh, we'll try to, we'll try to absorb that, it takes me a few days to absorb, I mean, I've known about it for a week, but I'm still, I'm still sinking in.
We really don't have.
Still sinking in.
We don't have a choice.
I know, it's not a choice.
I feel like the town's getting more and more adept every day.
We, we just have to go ahead and, and, uh, so maybe for the next meeting, Renee, that you could, uh, come up with some alternate, um, or the next meeting or two, come up with two or three choices.
Yeah.
Just work on it, and give us an update anyway. Talk to Oliver, how do you pronounce it?
Oliver.
Oliver. We have a sewer foreclosure?
Yes, um, yeah, can I just do that? Uh, we foreclosed on-
Do you have to sign something?
No, you just have to, basically, if you want a motion for me to put it out bid. We foreclosed on sixteen Dewey Mallory Street, it's a green house, um, the back sewer, as of today, is one thousand forty-two dollars and five cents, and the back taxes are, uh, three thousand seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And I think twenty-twenty's will go on to that, um, because it's who has, who owned it as of April first, so, um, you'll have to add about another fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred.
Another half a year, right?
Yeah.
So, so we have to put the minimum bid out for that, right?
Well, whatever you want to do.
So, you're looking at around twenty-six hundred, a little better than twenty-six.
Well, if you have forty-five-
Three, four, five, fifty-five hundred.
Thousand three fifteen.
Fifty-five hundred.
Four-five, fifty-five, you're talking six thousand, minimum, right?
And it's assessed, it's assessed at fifty-nine thousand nine ninety-one.
So, what, what do I have to do, Dan? Yeah, I mean, you were pretty good with prices last time, what do you think?
How much time do I have to?
Ding, 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 ding.
Is it the one that you posted?
One of the emails, I think.
Oh, that one. Ruth.
Ruth.
Well, see, if we put it out to bid, I believe the owners could have a chance to rebid back on their property as well, because I think-
They did feel badly, it slipped through their cracks.
They didn't know.
We foreclosed on sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
The only way they can even attain it again is to rebid on their own property, or the, or the, or the heirs of the property. Do you have a, a?
I'd say, minimum fifty, ten or twelve. What was it, fifty?
Fifty-six hundred, if they owe us, so, approximately.
Fifty-six, it's a change, fifty-six. I'd say closer to twenty, like forty percent. I mean, if we put it up on, what do we get, a loop?
And we've had people looking at it already.
I'll go with it, yeah, I'll trust you there.
I mean, twenty, what do you think, Sonia?
Which house is it?
Sometimes I'm doing Mallory.
D emails lived in it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
You know which one?
Yeah.
I don't know which one.
I'm not sure, I can't, I'm drawing a blank. Twenty thousand, we can accept or reject all bids?
That's right, that's right, let's, let's put it up for twenty.
So, you want to make a motion that we put it out to bid for twenty thousand?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Rachel?
Sure, I'll step in, yeah.
All right, now, we're at the, uh, letter, we all received a letter from Bob Judge, uh, I think that we've all read it, and some of us have communicated with him, I know I spoke with him.
Yeah, I spoke with him.
Did you speak to Mr. Judge, Rachel?
Oh, my goodness, we had a long talk yesterday.
So, and other, Sonia, did you get to talk to him?
No, I just talked yesterday.
Jason talked to him?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, um, I personally talked to him as well, and I called, uh, the name on, I called the Ellis Corporation as well as the project manager. And, what I can report back is, addressing some of the points in his letter, that the lights will be facing down, not out or up, and they will be turned lower at night. There is going to be a sign, because that was part of their original contract with the company, so unless there is a zoning or sign restriction for either lights or, or size, they don't reduce it. There's, um, I don't think there'll be any music being piped in, and there is, as you can see today, a very easily understandable entrance and egress, which they've all painted the lines on it today. There's going to be a grassy area in the corner, and I don't believe there's much, oh, and the outside is supposedly going to be white vinyl with clapboard, clap, clapboard-looking white vinyl. So, that's all, all I learned, that's what I learned about it.
The only other thing that I was thinking about are trash bins around there, because in my experience, the, there is a huge amount of litter that surrounds dollar stores or, or there, and, um, there should be trash bins there for people who leave and want to throw paper or plastic away. Uh, the other thing I thought of is that move grassy area-
Dumpster. Go ahead, Rachel.
What?
Go ahead.
Okay, and the grassy area that's sort of towards the road, I was looking at it today, and I thought, good place for a little hedge.
I think, I'm sure they'd be agreeable to any kind of, uh, garden club landscaping they want to do, I'm not sure they're gonna do it, but I bet they would allow us to do something nice there.
Yes, I think so, too.
So, I think we could approach the actual manager.
Yeah, we're on the same page on that.
Now, the timeframe is completion by January, would they believe the tenants would be moving in in February? That's what, all of what I've heard from the Ellis Corporation, whether they, that happens.
Well, that's lovely, the George Washington sale.
Had they worked, would we have managed?
That's what I'm thinking, it might be more like the Easter Bunny sale.
That's right.
Yeah, but they're trying.
Talking with him, my only concern, certainly, obviously, they have their dates and times and all that they need to accomplish, um, which currently with our town ordinances and zonings, we don't have any choice in about ninety-nine percent of anything. Anyway-
That's right.
Think of that in the future, residents.
We're on it, right, Dan?
Yes. My only concern, and we'll wait and see, as they've talked about the siding, is the, really only two sides, because I understand they're gonna be putting a fence between them and the residents, is the side that goes into the school that faces all the work that you've done at the cemetery, and obviously the face, the side that faces the parking lot and County Road. So, I'm hoping that, yes, it's done tastefully and looks very nice, but if not, I would hope that we could pursue maybe a, uh, facia change on two sides in the future, but not certainly to be addressed now.
I'm hoping the clapboard's not a problem.
I, I hope so, too.
And I was happy that he said that, because he said he did it on purpose to make it look more coastal, so, and, and it's not, and he thought it was brick, so, a brick facial, I don't think it's real brick, but, I think this, this will look nice.
So, really, the two sides, what I'm concerned, certainly, though, I'd like to, you know, thank Bob for bringing this out and obviously to our attention, and, and the letter, and hope that he is safe and healthy out in California, and we miss him, and-
Dealing with the fires.
Hope he can-
Said it's a little smoky.
Yeah, a little smoky, but hopefully he can get back over to the, the right coast.
That's right, the right coast.
So, thank you, Bob.
Yes, I agree with you, Dan. So, there's no motion to be made there, just some information.
No, just, uh-
Spirit of America recognition Lubeck Lions Club.
I don't know if you want to read, um, Bill Day.
Did you want to read that?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Uh, Bill Day of the Lubeck Lions Club, um, was, they, he brought it to my attention, and said that the, uh, the Spirit of America Foundation mentioned that we should bring it, they should bring it to the town select board, um, just a recognition, a congratulation, um, the-
The Spirit of America Foundation's main champion selected you, as Lubeck Lions Club, as a twenty-twenty Lubeck Spirit of America Foundation tribute winner for your outstanding volunteerism. You were very deservedly nominated by a committee of the Lions past district governors chaired by Michelle Crocker. Spirit of America Foundation is an Augusta, Maine 501(c)(3) public charity encouraging volunteerism and its Spirit of America Foundation tribute for commendable community service. May be presented in the name of any Maine municipality. You can find more about the foundation on its website.
What's that? Did they get a little plaque or something?
I believe so, um, a little bit more, says your state senator Mary Ann Moore annually...
You're a Lions Club member, are you not, Dan?
No, I am with her.
Oh, you are. Did they, did you know about this? So did they get a plaque?
I don't know.
Says your state senator Mary Ann Moore annually has been honoring Washington County's Spirit of America winners legislative sentiments during the next year's legislative session.
Oh, that's nice.
Most Maine municipalities honor their Spirit of America winners in some way, perhaps at a selectman's meeting, but here it is. I'd call your chair of selectmen Carol Dennison to ask her or another Lubeck official. So blah blah blah, and then, the county, they got a letter from the county commissioners as well, just congratulating them. And, and bikes for kids was mentioned, it's a worthy endeavor. They have fond memories of riding our bikes in our neighborhoods, everyone should have that experience.
It's always nice when someone gets mentioned on their...
Thank you, Lubeck Lions.
They do a good job.
College, annually, they do a, an amount for college students, so, quite a few things.
Wonderful.
So, okay, very good. Well, next on the agenda is the Safe Harbor line of credit document. Back in the day where we had a annual town meeting, we, they, but we had a special select board, and it might have been a special town meeting, where they authorized the Safe Harbor to enter into a five-hundred thousand dollar line of credit. We're only gonna do three hundred per town, it's very easy to do that amount. If we get down the line and we get more into the project, it may be, um, more. But we do have our first bill for the probing, and we want to run it through that account. So each year will be audited by the federal government for the, um, obviously, it's a large project, so they, they require a separate audit. So anyway, we have to have a motion, I would entertain a motion to sign the line of credit papers. We have them. Oh, this is it? I know it's handwritten.
When does that go out to bid, Carol?
It won't go out to bid until the contract, well, the need for permit has to be completed so that the contract can be submitted to the town. And then once everyone signs the contract, then we'll get a letter called a notice to proceed, and then we're gonna go out to bid. I believe that the section seven, which is the Arboretum Corps of Engineers' final part of the need for permit, will be completed, God willing, by Christmas, and that we will get a contract sometime at the beginning of the year. So we're hoping that we will be able to do a design-build bid in the spring, which would be super great.
That's the only way to go with design build.
Yes, yes. So, uh, so anyway, I need a motion to sign this, and then, of course, you and myself and Suzette, we'd be able to, we'll have a double signature on the check, but it's a totally separate account.
I move to sign this.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'll second it, Rachel.
You're welcome. I just thought we're about ready to forget that I was here.
Thank you, Rachel, all favor. So I think we all have to sign this one, right?
Keep going.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Rachel, you can come by anytime and sign it.
Okay. Maybe tomorrow.
She needs a back-to-back, they need a back-to-back.
Okay.
As long as there's three people.
Not here?
Yeah.
As long as you have a form, it should be...
You've got a public comment online.
A public comment, okay.
If we're at public comments, but...
We're not.
Okay.
Because we're, now we have to go to, uh, as far as the select board dates for November, we're having, we have a holiday on November eleventh, which is a Wednesday. So we would like to do the select board on Tuesday, November tenth. What is, what is that holiday, Veterans Day?
Veterans Day.
And then we have the day before Thanksgiving, which is a Wednesday on the twenty-fifth. We'd like to go on Tuesday, because I think everybody will be hopefully cooking the night before, not want to come to a meeting. So we could have the meeting on the twenty-fourth. So both Tuesdays in November instead of Wednesday, at six. So I guess we need a motion to do that?
A motion to do that.
It's a move that we need on the tenth and the...
Motion, Dan, second. She's on top of it. I say, I can see you really have missed us. All right, somebody second.
I have.
All in favor?
Why did you say the tenth and the twenty-sixth?
Tenth and the twenty-fourth. Did you have anything else? Oh, we have this, we have the question here. So we have an appointment page where I make a motion, we appoint Sherry Pike to be the election ward, election warden. Uh, do I have a second? All in favor, Sherry Pike for election warden, we want to make sure...
Oh, lovely, lovely, sure.
Okay.
And just a reminder, um, Friday is the last day that you can come in to vote in person without a special circumstance. Tomorrow, Thursday, is the last day you can call in to get a ballot mailed to you. Tomorrow is the last day you can get it electronically or phone in to have it mailed. And we'll be here, Suzette will be here until five PM on Friday, because we have to be, to make sure everybody can vote. And then much of the day...
I just want to let everybody know.
Polls open eight, eight AM, November third, eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Great, when this vote is all over, no matter who wins, I want everybody to know, I'm gonna really miss that plethora of political mailings that I get in the mail every day.
And how about the emails? Hundreds of emails. So, are we to public comment?
I'll just call.
Because we have too many updates as well, any too many updates? Dan, you missed the Harbor Board meeting, remember?
You said I'd get home.
I sent you a message on that phone, you don't take messages on that phone?
Oh, that phone is indisposed at this time, it'll be back...
Both of those phones, that phone gets only voicemail, so that phone doesn't work?
It'll be back by the end of the week.
Okay, so that's why I can get a hold of you. So we have a question from Ethan, did he want to type it, or?
You unmute.
Can he be unmuted? Ethan, if you're still there, you can ask a question.
Thanks, um, yeah, I was just, I wanted to chime in, thanks for bringing up Bob Judge's letter, and thanks for the update on that, that's all good news. I was curious if there was any interest in pursuing the question of signage any further, because that seems like the one piece that would potentially make a big difference, and, um, I'm not sure if you heard, you mentioned that the developer said that the sign is, is what it is, it's what it's been planned. I wondered if there was any room for negotiation on that, and how we would go about having a conversation.
Well, I spoke to, um, Bob about that, and from what I understand with contracts, the, the developer, and Ellis Corporation, have already signed a contract. They always ask for the best sign, and then they limit the signage as per the rules of the town that they're, they're developing in. So if there were to be any kind of revisiting of that, of that contract, it wouldn't be from the side of the developer. We would have to actually pursue talking to the legal department of Dollar General. I, I, I'm willing to do that, just out of, you know, out of, safe for the constituents that want that, to see if there would be any kind of change. But it's not gonna come from the side of the developer, because that was one of their big things that they requested before they even went on, you know, before they even committed to this project, that's what they wanted. But certainly, one phone call would not hurt. If the, the select board would like me to, I will talk to the legal department there.
Well, and, and basically, we don't have any, any rules.
No, it would have to be a gentleman's agreement, it would have to be, because the whole point of good neighbor and, hey, do you really need a sign in a small town where everybody knows it's gonna be there, kind of thing. It certainly is something to look forward to, to answer your question, I, I did, I did want to, um, I'm glad you brought it up, because I would have to get permission from the select board to actually approach the legal department of Dollar General to see if it's even possible to negotiate something different. So I, we will do that, if you'd like me to, I have the number.
Have we seen the sign proposal?
I have come to the site plan, I don't see the sign specifications there. I did ask that question, and they didn't have it offhand, but I do believe that the sign specification is, I don't think it's going to be small.
That'd be the first thing we'd want to find out, is what these specs are, and, I mean...
Well, I believe that is, uh, that was a question.
Before we make any calls or anything, we should know what, what they're proposing.
I, should it not be in the site, you know, I have the site, the site plan right here, Jason, maybe you can, maybe you can interpret this. Is the sign in, in this? I don't know, I couldn't see it, but I'm not, it might be there, we're, we're looking at the site plan.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I've seen many Dollar Generals around, and they have large yellow signs.
Right, and I believe...
I think the thing that we also need to consider, and I think Eastport talked about this and other people, is that whatever lighting, whether it goes on the sign, or whether it's ancillary lighting, has got to be geared down.
Well, I did say that, there, there, all the lighting will be geared down, you must have missed what I said. The lighting is supposed to be facing down, all of it.
Yeah, because we're very protective of our night sky.
And that's another good question, would be, um, the specs of the sign, and is it gonna be turned off when the, when they're closed?
Yes, yes. Because who cares if they're there in the middle of the night?
Has nothing to do with signs, no.
No, I didn't think so. But I, uh, I did ask that question, he said he didn't have it offhand, but I'm sure somebody can answer that for us. But maybe that would be a good reason to call Dollar General and ask the size of the sign.
Says you have site lighting to be determined by developer, and responsibility of town to earth professional land services.
The rules are without it.
So does that mean that Dollar General makes those decisions, or Ellis?
Developer.
Okay, that would be Dollar.
Uh, no, actually, uh, see...
Dan, the developer's different than the Dollar.
Right, the developer is Ellis Corporation, and the project manager is the person I spoke to. But he said their actual contract states that the first thing they asked for, we'd like to have a sign. And their, um, normal procedure in any development of subleasing out, leasing out to any of the dollar stores is, is for the Dollar General, they want to sign, and if the town has a signage constrain of size or, or height or brightness, then they obviously comply with that. But we don't. So I did appeal to a gentleman's agreement of, of making sense that, geez, well, maybe we don't need that. But I wasn't, I was talking to the wrong person, because they can't negotiate something they've already signed. I mean, they can't change the contract that they've signed with developments. So you're gonna have to, the, the plea would have to be to the Dollar General corporate headquarters and their legal department.
Can I just throw something up there?
Yeah.
Do you know where the sign will be located on the lot?
Right there in the corner.
Because it could be in shoreland zoning. Part of that parking lot is in shoreland.
Well, Gary told me it wasn't in shoreland zoning. Uh, the Red House isn't even shoreland zoning.
Well, when it started...
The Red House isn't even in shoreland zoning.
When it started, they stopped it, because he said it was in shoreland zoning. Remember they had a pin, they stopped it.
How could, how could not be a shoreland zoning at the Red House if the historical society is in shoreland zoning?
Of course, it was two hundred and fifty feet.
I don't know, I thought that, uh, it was... That's why we had to get permits.
Well, I thought the lower lot that we, they cut off was...
That was still part of it, the distance to the water.
Of course, Gary went across the street and made that one happen.
That was the previous CEO, uh-huh.
Then they had to go back and run it.
So, well, that's, that's a good point, should we, somebody want to measure from the corner to the water to see if it's in shoreland zoning?
I'm sure they had a survey.
I'm sure they did too. They have to go to the planning board.
You, you can measure all day long. What I learned from the DEP was measuring with a tape measure, this does not work.
Right.
I went right down on Water Street, and again, not important. So, what the DEP says goes.
Oh, I know what it was about the Red House, it was that because it was on, because of the, we were talking about the sewer, and because it was on town water and town sewer, then the restrictions on the shoreland zoning lot didn't apply because they were hooked up to the town. Not that it wasn't on shoreland zoning, I miss, I misspoke. So it's in shoreland zoning, but doesn't have to have the sewer restrictions, because if you're hooked up to the town water and sewer, that's what they worry about, is, is the lot big enough to, you know, withstand a shoreland zoning sewer system. Okay, so, uh, did you want me to at least try to ask questions about the sign, or?
I think we need to see it, or be aware of what it's gonna be before we pursue anything.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should just ask those questions, I, I'd call and try to find out the answer. The size, the, you know, the hours are gonna be turned off at night. I believe the hours are nine to nine.
And, and again, like you said, it's gonna have to be a gentleman's agreement. We have zero zone...
No, and I, and I preface that, look, we don't have any rules.
They can do whatever...
Town loves the no rule thing, yeah.
And people, I'm really worried, because I said, this is a huge corporation, and the bottom line is, they don't give a rip about Lubeck. But, so it is, it would behoove us to make the very squeaky wheels. We need to, if, yes, I think...
Well, I think that giving, putting on vinyl, white vinyl siding looking like clapboard is something that was nice. They did, they could have made some ugly brick buildings, so they apparently didn't.
Yeah, but they've probably done this before. I just think we need to very, make very sure that they do exactly what we want.
We can't, I, I, I'm not, I don't agree with you with that approach. I think the approach is, we're really happy you're coming, and is there any way that you wouldn't mind having a little less signage, just to see how that goes, and of course, if it doesn't, whatever, you know, however, I think, they, we have no leg to stand on, on at all. It's all on, it's all on the good neighbor approach, gentleman's agreement.
There's nowhere else to go, so hopefully the consideration of less signage...
Well, that's not necessary, yeah.
That's the, that's the approach. Why do you need it, because, and I think that, I'm gonna suggest that they put a big blue sign on what, uh, US Route one, like we all have to Dollar General nine miles, because if they're, they're trying to get anybody besides the people that come here for the summer, Campbell Bell or Lubeck, no one's gonna see it, the sign isn't gonna bring them here. They're not gonna see the sign nine miles away, so, right? So, and people are going to see it that come through the town, that's my feeling.
They've done their marketing research to know that that store is gonna be a success, I believe, but they weren't exactly, I don't think so.
I know.
They're gonna be putting a sign, one hundred percent, out, you know, one of the blue signs to bring it up.
Yeah, because that, but the whole point is thousands of people come to West Quadi, they come to FDR, think they need stuff. They don't have to drive to Machias or Walmart to get the little things that they sell there, whatever, batteries, I mean, I don't know.
I don't think they sell it all.
Whatever they sell, but hopefully we can all get along, because I know, I, it would be nice that, it would be nice that it isn't too, uh... They do want people to not boycott it. Uh-oh, terrible silence.
The way you said it.
I don't think anybody's gonna boycott, I think most, everybody in town...
That was a double negative, I think, no quotes there. What I meant to say was, we're happy they're coming, we're happy they're giving people jobs, I don't know if we need a huge sign, because we're all gonna know it's there.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, and I appreciate the other changes that they've offered to me, sorry.
Go ahead, Ethan, what did you say?
No, I just wanted to say that I, I, I do appreciate the, the, um, changes they've made, or the, it sounds like things that they were already doing to kind of, uh, make the building blend in with the rest of the town, and I appreciate that very much, and, yeah, given, as Bob said in his letter, uh, given the location, given the proximity of the Historical Society, the cemetery, uh, first thing you see when you come into town, it would be nice if they were willing to, to compromise somehow on the, on the signage as well.
Good.
I agree, that is the sticky with it there. See what we can do.
Thank you very much for that, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for that comment. Uh, uh, anything else?
One of the comments on my Facebook feed is, you can't push people around on their private owned property.
Okay. Well, no, you can't.
And a pregnant silence descended on the group.
Rachel, when are you going to get to come graces with your presence?
I don't know, whenever the doctor says I can get out in public.
Okay, well, we do miss you.
We'll hold our feet up.
Hope, hopefully you'll be here in time for Christmas cookies, right?
That would be present.
Yeah, I am, I am missing you guys big time, and I'm feeling a little bit better every day. But, um, having replaced two valves, and the doctor says that I am hugely compromised. I am, you know, I'm A number one susceptible, so, you know, I hang out of the house.
Well, at least you're here on a Zoom call, so we'll see you next meeting. And that will be already November tenth, right?
Yeah.
So, two weeks, two weeks Friday day.
From yesterday.
Got it.
So we'll.
Is, you know, one thing, did any, is anybody in town doing anything for Halloween? Is there any townwide endeavor for Halloween?
I'm not going to promote it, but I, I, I'm sure they're going to have the truck and tree thing they like to have. Probably have, I'm sure people will show up to do that, where they.
Yeah.
They give out treats at, uh, behind their pickup trucks at, at the IDA. They've been doing that, which is easier, easier for the children, I, I don't know. I'm, I guess that's up to parents to decide if they want to expose the children.
It's an iffy holiday this year.
It's a what?
It's an iffy holiday this year.
Yes, it's all iffy, very iffy.
Yeah.
All the holidays.
Yes, well.
Been a rough year.
Big motion to adjourn. I will second that.
All in favor? Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night. I didn't say it. Yes, clarify something, I was wondering from my, go on.